All right, I apologize for the delay in starting the meeting. I'll go ahead and call the meeting to order. The first order of business, we need a, now we've got attendance. First item of business is approval of minutes. Did everybody have a chance to look over the minutes in the packet on the table here? And if there are no additions or corrections, I entertain a motion to approve minutes.
So move.
Your second. All right, say aye.
Aye.
Those three minutes are approved. First item of business tonight is an update on Nathan Gilbert's building. Nathan, you want to just let us know any progress you made on that?
Actually, I've made quite good progress. I've got mostly interior filled out on the inside of it. There's some ceilings left. I'd say it's 90% done on the inside. I hope to start on the exterior, probably about Friday, maybe Thursday. The weather's just not broken, so, you know, I've had a few guys in there working. It will be pretty quick.
Were you able to get the scrap that, did you get to use that one? Okay, thank you. Were you able to use that then?
Oh, Lance, no, I didn't call him. You know, I had a couple other guys that were lined up to do. I got ahold of them, you know, they're agreeable to help.
Okay, well, our management service is getting it done. So, you think by the next meeting it'll be completed?
Well, it should be, it's a long time before that.
All right, well, while we're planning on seeing you at a March meeting, and then if it's all done, unless we see you on the street, we won't need you to come to our meetings anymore, I don't think. Anybody have any questions?
That's March 22nd, correct? Just to let you know, we moved your March meeting to the 22nd.
Is that what day?
Monday, it's, or Tuesday.
It's a week, it's a week later.
Just one week.
It's spring break.
Oh, okay, but it's Thursday or?
No.
Be the 4th, 42nd.
Be the 42nd. Anyone else have any questions for Nathan? Thanks, I've worked one more night. All right, Nathan, thank you. We'll see you in March.
All right.
Next item of business is Myron Beckner and the signs, and Myron, you want to?
Want to what? What's the question?
I have to tell you what I, I guess, give you some dis-
All right, all right, let me, first of all, I guess, I didn't really consider the sign as a temporary banner in my eyes. I mean, I didn't really think it was that regulated, although I did call Kathy to ask her some dimensions and whatever, and I, to be honest, I didn't remember after I got done talking to her because she said something about square, something square feet of the sign or whatever. And again, it wasn't meant to be a sign that permanently placed. My life's business, the scrapbook store, just like every other business was having a tough spot. And I put it up there just to try to help through the Thanksgiving and Christmas season. And that was what my intent was. And the same timeframe, then, I didn't think about it as well, but I've been, as you probably know, I've been hit up by probably a bunch of deadbeat tenants, and I changed my strategy. Probably cost me $25,000 in lost revenue from deadbeat tenants. And meanwhile, the city just, you know, I keep paying my taxes. So I was trying to change from a rental business to a rent-to-own. I didn't really give it a second thought on the side of the house. Again, it wasn't meant to be a sign for long-term, it was a banner. I had like 10 or 12 houses, I wanted to get either sold or leased because I had to vacate the houses because the economy was so bad, people weren't paying their rents. And I needed something real quick to end these houses back because it cost me around $20,000. And plus, they tore up my houses. That's why I put them up, and I made a mistake. When Gary called me about the big banner, I had it down in two hours, didn't I, Gary? On the side of the house, I had it down, I talked to you about 11:00, by 1:00, I had it down.
You mean the day you came in?
Yes, yeah, he said, take the sign down, and I went and took it down. That's the first time you ever had ever discussed the big banner with me. Anyway, the same day I took it down. And also, then, we talked about putting a sign, maybe, you know, I asked him about putting it on my trailer, and he said that was okay, but I admit, I didn't leave it set there too long during the icy storms and whatever. I left it set out there by CDS house, three or four days, and, you know, at first, maybe I did it on purpose, but I just kind of forgot about it, it was there. So, I don't know what's legal in this town, I'm just, I'm trying to get myself out of a bad situation. I wasn't trying to cause anybody any harm. It wasn't a sign or banners. I see banners out Walgreens and everywhere else along businesses, I didn't think any about it. It did not block the view of traffic coming. It was a professionally done sign, it wasn't one of my handwritten signs. So, I don't, I don't know.
So, Myron, what day approximately did you put that sign up on?
With 30 houses and tenants coming in and out, my work, my work's so hectic, I can't-
I'm just surprised, was it mid-December or?
Which, small sign or the?
Or the big sign?
Um, I don't know. Gary, do you have any idea?
Is that the place you turned?
Yeah. It was up probably for at least two weeks or so, three weeks. And he asked me to take it down and said it was out of ordinance. And then it was like 20 degrees out that day with blowing wind, and I went down and took it out that day. I didn't, I didn't wait another day. I guess I'm just asking for a little leeway. I mean, like I said, it wasn't meant to cause a big problem, it was just to boost the business up for a little bit.
Yeah, I'm sure for most people here, this is the first that, you know, has been involved with this, so we've-
And I didn't see it, I didn't even think about it as a business because the, the sign did not relate to the house on the corner, which it is not his own business. The signs were relating to other information, so I wasn't trying to make that a business spot. It was just that I put the banner there to advertise my other business. The only thing I would ask is, you know, I think last fall, when you were over, had Bear Shell shut down, when Gary called me in to ask me about using our parking lot at Mississippi Scrapbook Store, I didn't give it second thought. Within two hours, they had barricades up and were using my lot. And yes, I did get some stone from the city for grinding down my parking lot. But, you know, I tried to work with the city, I didn't, I didn't go back to a policy book and say, oh, I can't have, I can't do it because it's liability on my lot. I said, sure, if you need something, come on through. And for about two weeks, traffic came off Lincoln through A&amp;W because it was causing him problems. I let him come on through my lot. So, I mean, you know, I'm not trying to be hard to work with, I'm just trying to make my businesses go.
Yeah, and we're trying to get up to speed with Myron. So on the, it looks like the sign was taken to the police department on the 28th?
I don't know, they took it, no one called me, no one gave me any notifications down. I thought somebody stole it. I tried to report to the police department.
But then on January 7th, you retrieved it?
Yeah, someone, a little birdie said you might check with the police department. No one, I mean, if you take something down, why wouldn't you pick up the phone and say, hey, we took your sign down. By the way, if you wanted to come get it? No one bothered to do that. I had to hunt around, I accused the neighbor of probably taking it down falsely.
And so, did you not get the letter notifying that the sign was in violation of that?
Well, they handed me a letter when I signed for it, and to be honest, you know, it was several pages talking about signs, and I did not read it thoroughly. It probably related to my banner, but I didn't, I didn't think any about it.
Or, I had confusion, there was two signs there. One was like maybe a 4 by 6 or 4 by 8.
It was a banner, a banner sign where you hang the strings.
That was in the city's driveway. So they retrieved that out of the city's driveway. That, the other sign, the other sign was actually, what, 4 by?
It was 3 by like 16 on the side of my house. Again, it wasn't meant to be a long-term sign, it was just a temporary to get my business jump-started again.
And, Commissioner, you know, to confirm what Mr. Becker says, when we need help from him last summer or fall to help A&amp;W out, he did give the passage through the church parking lot behind A&amp;W. And we had done some work before him come out, we appreciated his support, and we were done, which we did, so you back who out there done a little bit of work, didn't take long. And when we were done, we put gravel in there. Didn't help the city, but did help the contractor and help the business that A&amp;W, you know, we were trying to be friendly, we worked with A&amp;W. And Myron, you know, he helped us out there. Now, as far as the signs, they were put up well, they had lighting on them, and everything else was a little bit professional. But we did as well, because Mr. Becker was so obliging during last summer's construction, we probably allowed him more time than we should have with the signs out there in the yard and on the house, but-
Well, I appreciate that, you know, it's all about working together.
But, I don't know if he didn't, he misunderstood or what, but he talked to Gary, he talked to Kathy, and he was told that he couldn't do that without a variance, but they were put up anyway. And when we went to, we read the dates on there, it's the time that Mr. Becker received the letter, there was a 10-day period for him to act, and then the fine started on the 11th day, which was one of the other 10 days. So there was plenty of time to act. And also, Mr. Becker's defense, when he did come in, I got ahold of him. Part of it, I think Kathy or Gary, correct, Gary tried to make calls, but didn't get the answers. Did he leave messages?
No.
Did he leave any messages, didn't get an answer, so, ended the call. But I told him, considering when he did finally come in, he took it down within the next couple hours, like he said he did, that I'd speak on his behalf in reducing the fine. But the city has incurred expenses as well, there are legal fees, you know? Kathy's had lost time, Gary's had lost time, you know, got my time, whatever, but, so there, I believe there should be some sort of fine. To what degree, it would be up to you, those folks that-
Yeah, what's, like, where are we at?
You had that, I don't think anybody-
See, I misunderstood, when I picked that sign up, I thought I was signing for that sign and that that pack of information saying that the sign was in violation was related to the sign I just picked up, not to the one that's still there.
Well, I'll give you the benefit of the doubt, you might not-
I did not, I mean, it was like-
Where are we at?
10 days for Thursday.
When you were notified?
$2,500.
Were you informed that you must obtain an amendment which causes $2,000? And then it had to be approved by the board of zoning appeals?
Oh, what I remember is a conversation with Kathy, and may, you can correct me if I'm wrong, we talked about it being a banner, as a temporary thing, and she said that something to the effect that if the mayor or her or Gary approved it, and I, you know, I-
Our conversation was, you asked me, since you were gracious to help the city, when A&amp;W needed help, if that was enough to grant you to have a sign out there. I told you I couldn't make those kind of deals. I had to abide by the ordinance, and the ordinance states that there's not allowed to be off-front signs in our two zones, so I couldn't allow that, and therefore, I could speak for Mr. Murray or Mayor Herbert.
Well, I thought we talked about a banner being differentiation between that and a sign, a temporary banner.
No.
I, I took it that way, I'm sorry. Because it was not constructed as a sign, it was a temporary banner, and that's why I-
No, if it's a small real estate sign that you want to put out there to say that your house is for rent or that you're selling, you can do that, but other than that, no.
See, and I think that your surrounding businesses would probably offend us as well because they have to go through the proper channels to be able to-
I understand that.
Direct those signs a little bit, you know, like-
But you have to look, though, at the way it was secured, it wasn't meant to be a long-term, like a signage, because it had two strings of the banner, the original banner. Now, the other one was put on the side of the house, because I thought, I don't, I'm not, I don't deal with this like you guys do all the time. I thought, it's my house, I can put a banner up there for a while, nobody's going to say anything, because way back from the streets, professionally done, and I thought, it'd be all right. But I was wrong, I was wrong, you know?
The signs are down now, right, Myron?
Right, I took the big sign down, the same day Gary called me in and said, take it down.
So the issue's resolved, we're just trying to decide what finally may occur to pay. And I'm not going to speak for the commission, but, I mean, Gary, Murray's time and the mayor's time certainly were something, but, I mean, those are all, you know, we really didn't incur any specific costs. Were there specific legal fees involved in this?
I'd say you probably got three hours' time with you, Terry.
Yes. Would it be considered that $38,000 I paid to the county last year, they might give me a little bit of credit towards this?
That's one thing we're considering, I'm not sure they're considering, Myron.
I mean, I bust my rear end to keep these rental houses going and fight with tenants every day to work hard, to pay taxes, and all I'm asking for is a break. And I paid the county, which supports the city, which supports the police, which supports the fire department, over $38,000 last year. I'm done. Do what you want to do.
Thanks, Myron.
I had a question I wanted to ask you.
Okay, go ahead.
The letter he received was a certified letter, correct?
No.
Because he said sign.
He will accept certified letters.
He will not accept.
Oh.
Well, then, I ask you- I haven't used those certified letters.
Can you accept it?
We didn't have cert then, wouldn't we?
It was cert by the police department.
And what day was that?
December, what day is it on there?
It's when he picked up the first sign, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Early December.
Well, the letter notified-
January 7th, January 7th was when he picked up.
Retrieved his sign and received a letter informing him that he-
Well, Terry, if he receives the letter, if you get, do you have sign, read and understood the material? You don't.
He's up to sign, you receive it like, because you're part of mail, you're not in the mail, you guys served by the police department. Terry, I get a copy of the letter, but-
They have a, they have a copy of the letter.
We have the letter.
But they were given, he was given 10 days to act without any fine.
And then after the 10 days, is that when the fine-
When the fines began.
Began.
January 17th is when-
What did they start?
I think it was 17.
$250 a day, that's what it states in the sign.
So, so, if I was concerned, this was building up, so once again, I tried to call him, and finally did get ahold of him. And he came in, within the next couple hours, we sat down and discussed, 2 hours later, took it down. But, you know, there was plenty of time there, there was 20 days worth. And it started in October, when Kathy told me pretty good.
Oh, we told him he needed a variance, and-
Yes.
And that we could not cut those deals. We could speak on his behalf to the Board of Zoning Appeals, saying, hey, if this is a 30-day temporary sign or whatever he wants to do here, we'll support it because he helped us. And we deliberately didn't take any action until after the holidays. So if the signage was effective, it would help his businesses.
Yeah, I mean, I, my opinion, I mean, for, for these signs, I feel $2,500 is kind of excessive. But I don't know, I, recouping any legal costs we incurred would be reasonable. How, what, you guys have anything?
Well, that's kind of my expectation, I don't know the whole thing, is that we get reimbursed for the money at the time that, you know, the lawyer and the city's put into it. Show, maybe show him some legal seats, since he did, was very cooperative with the city during the project.
I guess my question is, just as a supposal, is $500 going to cover what we actually got in our outfit?
People, legal fees, you know, if we just, now, our labor is our salary as part of doing business, City Greensburg, then we don't have any income as part of our salaries, and that's part of doing business.
And that was what I was looking at.
Well, what doesn't surprise me is that he's playing ignorance of the law.
He doesn't accept, he also doesn't sign for, I mean, yeah, he tries to use that quite often, so I'm told, I have no-
And believe me, he knows my phone number, but I know his private.
And now, he's pulled this sign around his trailer, which he has brought now, which is not considered to be a mobile sign because it must be made, hitched to something to where it can be moved at all times. And right now, it's parked back on his property where his wife owns the business.
He asked me flatly, and I said, yes, you can pull it around behind your truck. You need to pull it into the property before you had it, if you're working on the house and when you leave the sign was with you.
I think he should be fine with the point he has.
Lady been replaced as the hanging judge. Bruce, he was also told that, that big banner that he had for the rent-to-own wasn't allowed sign on the scrapbook store because that's a business. And instead, he chose to put it on his trailer and then leave it parked there at the corner of Bear Shell, Lakehead, for a week.
Well, he left, I actually got some information for him, was trying to, maybe he's under tension because of the amount of money he spent on advertising. I contacted Lamar Billboards, who own most of around our town, and actually got him price quotes, what it would cost for him to design his own sign and put it in a high-visibility area. And if he could look into that, he'd find out he'd save a lot more money and probably be a lot more successful in selling houses or renting them.
Well, does anyone want to, he asked Scott.
I just want to say, and again, the fine is your decision, but I would just like to say that I don't know that it's been that bad here lately, but for quite a while during the summer, we had a lot of dealings with Mr. Becker. And he was, in most cases, not real cooperative at times. And, you know, again, I just wanted to pass that on because, I mean, there was times we were dealing with him a couple times a week.
It, yeah, on some of his rental houses, Scott and I, we get called quite frequently. And there for a few months, it seemed like, you know, the minute you just knew who the owner was going to be when he said it. And then, you know, occasionally you get a shock because it's someone else, but, you know, we get that quite often. And then you send him a certified letter, and we give it back.
My question to legal counsel would be, can we hold this over his head and tell him that we have, we have more problems with him, we're going to initiate a fine? I mean-
Yeah, once we draw up this-
I think it'd be pretty definitive as to what the problems are.
You know, we're charging quite a many things, we'll be very upset. And he can agree, and on Martin's behalf, he's got a lot on his mind right now, he really does. You know, the way the economy is and everything, and $2,500 is probably excessive, is about most would charge. And it can be amended, I'm sure, and should be. There have been times that, we may not get an off-base here, but when the sewer lines broke underneath the house and people are living in the house, they don't want to have to move out, they want to fix. Neighbors across from them are the ones that's complaining about the smell. And to the point I said, you know, this has to be fixed, come Monday, or else. It means closing the house down, moving the people out, it's a sanitation situation, and we, the city, can do that. He had a lot on his mind, you know, a lot going, but, you know, he kind of finds what I'm saying. If you see the dates, I find it's working. Just so things, be brave, gentlemen, we'll go on.
Yeah, really, this time, and looking at the, I had seen that one scrapbook sign several times up Lakehead. On this timetable, the only thing, I mean, obviously, the time that he had to act on it is disturbing, but, I mean, the fact that he was taking the police department, he goes, gets it, and gets back up.
No, no, he had two signs up, and we took the one down.
It was, it was in our right of way.
It was in our right of way.
It had the scrapbook.
So we could do that. And the big sign on the end of the house, in front of the house, he left that there still.
That was on private property, we had no right to trespass.
So the scrapbook sign never did go back up?
No.
But he didn't get the letter?
So which is the sign that's on the trailer that's parked in front of his wife's business?
That's the sign that was on the house.
Okay, but it's just on a trailer, there's no vehicle attached to that trailer, so that makes it a local sign? Because it's on a trailer and no vehicle?
If you leave a park at the residence permanently, like he was.
Well, but right now, it's at his wife's place of business behind A&amp;W. I mean, I drive that road three miles a day.
And I also knew it was on North Carver earlier today, so.
It moved. But it's just the trailer, there's, there's no truck to pull the trailer.
He uses his truck to move it from point A to point B.
The question is-
When he thinks he's getting close to his timeframe, he'll move it to somewhere else.
What is the timeframe on the local?
It depends, what classification, in a B2, it's like 120 days, and in an I1, it's a little bit longer.
But you still get a stay. There for 120 days?
With, with the permit.
With the permit.
But he never gets a permit, correct?
No.
Oh, I was going to say, without permit, no, no?
And he doesn't seem amicable to, with the system to get a permit, even though-
Yeah, and the permit's real expensive, it's 20 bucks.
And if he's not fine over the maintenance and maintenance behavior, then he just can do it.
I'm like Gary, I know he's had a lot on his mind with the economy and stuff, and he's just trying to get his houses sold. And then he's working with Beck Farms out there, because he was concerned about the landfill coming in on his property, so he, his time was consumed a lot getting information together to combat his own residence area with contamination, so.
What's our mechanism for collecting the fine?
Our, that's a chart.
So we're going to have to incur more attorney?
And he pays a lot in taxes.
So if we issue, if we decide on a dollar amount, that goes to Terry. Terry puts more legal fees, so we're very large.
Running, yes.
Yes, okay, I'm just trying to get, so I understand it.
I'm getting, I think it's going to be cheaper for us as a city not fine at this point. Because I don't, unless he's, obviously, he's not-
Yeah, because-
One, he's like nice, I-
Well, what's the mechanism? Okay, the mechanism to get the, whatever dollar amount we come up with, sounds to me like we're going to take him to court. So now, we've not only incurred Terry's fees for doing this work, but now we're going to have, he gets more when he goes to court.
But I just- Mr. Becker know what the fine is at this time, or what he thinks he might be looking at?
He knows it's $2,500, and he's worked here to minimize it or leave it.
I'd fine him $1,000, if he pays within 30 days, it's $500, that's what I was going to suggest.
Because if you guys weigh those fees-
And he knows he's going to plumb his nose with us every time there's a new-
Right, yep. So, we can't let him go free, you know, he's got to be penalized for his actions, so, you know, we must impose a fine. I would say that.
Well, in my original thinking, we're, we're going to recover our legal fees.
That's what I'm saying, about $500, so. And I think he'd be more or less suitable that way.
Well, I think, though, we should do the, I agree with Terry, we do the 30 days. We tell him it's $1,000, and if he pays within 30 days, we'll reduce it to $500.
Are we agreeable with him?
I think he'll stand 30 days.
Yeah, so how's he going to get that letter?
Well, we sent him the la- Oh.
We have a guy over here that's going to deliver one.
Do you want his fine, fellas, will deliver it?
I think it's regular mail.
But it's sort of, he has time for it.
But we can, regular service, mail, regular-
But he can say he never got it, he has time, and say, be right back to you.
Okay, but this is what we have to do sometimes when we serve unsafe building notices, because we'll get them back, people won't sign for them. We have the police department to deliver, and we take them two copies, they sign both copies. We get one copy back, it proves that they signed for it, and they date it also.
That'd be my recommendation.
It'd be served, yeah. We take some.
We've done this, we've done this two other times in the past since I've been here. One other time, I won't say, but Tom Hunter was involved. That tells you what it was. Another time, it was a car law, that was in the residential area, and we did have to end up going to, or running with the lawsuit to, you know, collect our money. But the other one, Mr. Hunter was gracious.
Right, now, Mr. Becker. I will entertain a motion at this point, then, for an amount to fine Mr. Becker, and if you want to qualify that in terms of fees, that's fine, how do you complement it? I'll make a motion that we fine Mr. Beckner a thousand dollars and that if he pays five hundred dollars within thirty days, that will satisfy it.
Should it be one hundred or should it be his fines five hundred dollars in the first three days? The thirty, the thirty? Okay. Fine on thirty.
Okay, so that's my motion. All right, that's already motioned. And do we need to specify how we want that delivered, Terry, or will that be...
All right.
Um, there's motion for it here, second?
Second.
Um, I guess a roll call, uh, that's it.
Okay. Who's second?
Bruce.
Okay, Bruce?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Kevin?
I will say no, I think you might just say it first.
Herb?
Yes.
Roy?
Yes.
Lynn?
I'll say, I have a few funds.
Now, that will be what the resolution of this will be.
Four to one, one to one, so we're okay, right?
Yeah, I should, uh, we need four of both.
We needed four, right? So it's four to one to one, so...
Yeah.
Just making sure.
Good point, word.
Um, is there anything else coming for the planning mission to be done?
Yeah, we, you, what do we need to do about, what action do we need to take on this?
Oh, thank you. The, um, our...
South, right there. So, how do you want to, how should we do that?
I report to the board that, uh, that I negotiated with Linda Taylor's attorney the following, that she would convey to us, the city, the subject matter, real estate, and also the five parcels of real estate near the water plant. And she has to transfer the properties to us. The subject matter property is under contract. We renovated, demolished, some demolished, and then some restoration to keep it stable. And that a thousand dollars is prepaid with that contract. And that's in force right now. We would follow through with the balance of that contract and services that they will send. We would also be obligated to pay the two thousand and ten taxes available for two thousand and eleven. And that, that is what, at the end of that, we'd end up, we'd end up with an order from the court with that language that I just got through stating to you. And if that's what the board's desire is, and I move for motion to accept that, that go forward to execute the necessary documents.
So we would need to, I need to entertain a motion to do...
Now, just to make it, it's not the wa, water treatment plant, it's the wastewater treatment.
Waste water treatment plant?
Yeah, just...
We have the...
We actually have the legal discussion, just for point of reference.
Thank you.